Start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, all. We have called order. We will start off with public comment. Is there any public comment? I see a good number of people joining us, so if you can just raise your hand. Adam can...
I think most of those folks are here for one of our public hearings.
Okay. Any public comment in the room? No hands. All right, well, I guess we'll start the potty. We'll go right into A&R Plan for 101 Pleasant Street. Is that you, I hope? All right, I guess we'll put that off.
Oh, we have, he's...
Oh.
I'm here for that on some...
Oh, excellent, excellent. I forget about you. Welcome, please tell us.
Yeah, so I'm here for Graz Engineering. I believe you guys have seen this plan before, or at least something similar. So essentially, what we did is we just shifted that lot line back about 10 feet. Yep, the one that you're circling there. And that was to meet that 175 lot width, with lot width going through a building, because Conservation wanted us to move the building back a little further from the wetlands. So in order to meet that zoning requirement, we just went to shift the lot line back. And also, you guys approved a waiver to run the driveway over the existing gravel drive that's already there. So the last A&R you guys approved had curved lines along the driveway, and we've just straightened those out because we don't need that anymore now that the driveway is going to be off of the lot. Yeah, I believe those are the only changes that were made.
I don't recall seeing this before.
This is 101 Pleasant Street. It was the A&R that was approved at the time they withdrew the definitive subdivision plan. They have adequate frontage and lot size. As was described, the Conservation Commission in reviewing their plans to construct required that they shift the building further from that wetland line at the front of the southern lot. So in order to be able to meet the lot width requirement, they needed to shift the jog in the the common lot line back. There's excessive, or there's excess lot area on both lots. So that shift really doesn't make an impact on compliance with zoning. The board did give them approval through the common driveway bylaw to locate at the existing gravel drive to minimize disturbance in a sensitive area.
We did.
You did. The Conservation Commission had
Asked for it.
Had asked that they be permitted to use that because it was already disturbed. It was the high area. It avoided additional conflicts with the wetlands. And the board will note that there have been multiple violations on this property over the past seven to 10 years. And the commission has worked with the current property owner to resolve those, and they felt that using the already disturbed area was going to have the least impact overall.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, the property, the 225 Pleasant Street, is our large field?
Yes.
That we don't have hardly any access to?
That is correct.
Is it possible that we we can't ask for access through an A&R, can we?
You can do anything. There's no real mechanism for them to do it, and there isn't really a mechanism to memorialize it either. I mean, there's no written decision that goes with an A&R. There's the signed plan that...
Exactly. Which is my concern with something later. All right, they meet. They meet lot widths, lot frontage, and lot area. They meet the upland area required for... That's not a reduced frontage, is it?
It's not.
So they've got plenty of upland?
Mm-hmm.
So everybody involved, Conservation, I guess, is the only other person that's been involved in this?
Yes, and this was in response to Conservation.
And they were fine with it along the...
Correct.
Mr. Torgerson, have you got any input on the A&R for 101 Pleasant?
No, sir, I do not.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, I guess it's fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
All right, I guess if there's no further comments, I take a motion.
I would move that we accept the A&R Plan for 101 Pleasant Street.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Ms. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much. So now we enter into public hearings. The first one being for Northfield Road and Holman Street, stormwater permit continued from 6:27. Good evening.
Good evening. Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering, here tonight for a continued meeting for Holman and Northfield. When we last met, I believe it was back in June, there were a couple comments to the plan. Graves Engineering reviewed the revised plans. We added a rain garden to Lot 5, which addressed his concern about us not providing phosphorus removal on that one lot. So we didn't have to ask for a waiver anymore. And then the other issue was the common driveway with Lot 3 and 4. We filed the A&R Plan, we revised the lot configurations, we split the lot line with the common driveway, and the building commissioner has reviewed and approved that. And I believe the A&R Plan has already been endorsed and approved as well. So I think we're here now as a formality, just to answer some questions if you have, and approve the stormwater plan.
Is that correct? We did approve that A&R?
It was constructively approved.
Okay.
And in your packet was the opinion of the building inspector outlining his interpretation of the common driveway?
Well, he did speak to the second sentence, but he didn't speak to the third one.
The third one?
Where it splits the lot line for the length... Well, I don't know. I just, I don't agree with his... But the A&R is done. We didn't even deal with it, so it's not an issue.
And I mean, you're... What would have to happen in a disagreement about the content of the bylaw would be, he's made a decision, the board has the right to appeal it through the zoning board. That is one of their functions. You, the board could choose to be an aggrieved party to a decision of the building commissioner?
Okay.
For clarity.
We can have this discussion in board comment?
Sure.
Okay. Super. So there's really nothing new, per se, from our last meeting?
No.
No. The biggest contention, I think, was the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And that's been taken care of by our time constraints?
Well... Not necessarily. I mean, the A&R being approved doesn't... Well...
The common driveway is not supposed to be applied for until a building permit is...
Correct.
So...
So there...
And it doesn't come to us, it goes to the person who made the decision.
Correct.
So it's out of our hands.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the board had said they wanted to wait till the A&R was filed and approved before they proceeded with the stormwater filing.
Okay, and has it been filed? Excellent. Okay. So, I don't know why I'm bothering opening, but there's nothing new. So you eliminated the need to ask for the waiver for the phosphorus?
Yes.
And you have done everything that you need to for the residential lots?
Yep.
So it's kind of a win-win for town and for you? Kind of?
Yep.
Mr. Torgerson, do you have any input on the stormwater permit?
I do not.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do want to talk a little bit in the decision, if we get there, but yeah, no, I have nothing else.
So we have to close the public hearing and then vote yea or nay, and then we talk about the decision?
Yep. No, as I said, that's not now.
Sure.
No, I'm happy.
Public hearing. Is there any public comment on the stormwater permit for Northfield Road and Howard Street? If anybody's online, please raise your hand, we can call on you. Nothing? Nothing? No?
No.
All right, I guess I would accept a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing for... Can we call this Northfield Road and Holman Street, or what's our...
Yep, stormwater permit.
Stormwater permit.
I will second that.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion about closing the public hearing? All in favor? Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. We are officially closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would... Do we have any discussion before?
That's a good question. You have all the time that you wish to deliberate.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Do we have any... We have the draft decision, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
I'm going to be in trouble, I forgot to do that earlier. Uh-oh, it's been live, though, right?
Yeah.
So we have moved and seconded to fill in, and everything else is filled in?
Yeah, I mean, someone will have to make the motion, and then there are construction hours, which are currently 7 to 5 Monday through Friday, 8 to 3 on Saturday. I will note that the board has historically used those hours in more commercial areas, and in more residential areas, it's been 7 to 4 or 8 to 5 in, during the week, and usually 8 to noon on Saturdays.
You ran my mind. That was going to be my question.
All right, it is residential?
Mm-hmm.
They've got...
There's neighbors across the street, there's neighbors to both sides.
They've got two new houses across the street on Holman, right?
Yep, there's two on Holman, there's two directly across Northfield, and there's a house to the west that they purchased some land from, that they'll also be constructing a house in, sort of in front of.
So are we thinking that it should be 8 to 5 during the week? Or what were the thoughts? 8 to 4? 8 to 4 is cutting them down by an hour.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with 8 to 5.
I think that's reasonable, too.
Yeah?
8 to 5, but I haven't been here for past decisions on that, so...
That's fine, that's fine. You all remember.
But you're an elected official, so now your opinion counts now.
Oh, wow, okay.
I'm of the opinion people can just get up before 7:00 AM, like, you know, good industrious folks, but I also am deaf in one ear, so when I don't want it, I just lay in the other ear, and it doesn't matter.
Okay, so we want 8 to 5 on Monday through Friday? Mr. Torgerson, have you got any input on that?
Those hours are fine.
8 to 5?
8 to 5 is fine.
Okay. How about the weekend? Saturday?
I have no problem with getting an early jump on stuff. I might be on the... I would prefer to do my own work if I could earlier in the day, so I don't really have an issue if anyone else wants to start it earlier.
I don't think I heard much at all of what you said.
He likes to get an early jump, he doesn't mind if someone else is up doing things.
Okay.
So he doesn't have a lot of input on that.
Okay, how do we feel about 8 to 3 on Saturday?
I don't want to create undue hardship for the applicant, but I want to be sensitive to if people might want to enjoy the good weather while it's around and have, you know, and be using their yards. Noise-wise, I don't know how much issue that would be.
You call 90 degrees good weather?
Well, it's going to stop at some point.
True. Okay, so they're already restricted from construction on Sundays?
Yeah, that's fair.
So what is our thought? I mean, Adam said typically we've done, what, 8 to noon?
We've done 8 to noon and 8 to 3. It's, it really been dependent on the location. On Flat Hill Road, it's 8 to 3. And they own a fair amount of land in between.
And 8 to 3 is probably not as densely populated as this area. I mean, Flat, Flat Hill Road.
Yeah.
And, no, I mean, realistically, there's a lot of road noise in that location anyway, so I don't even know that it matters much. I think 8 to 3 is probably fine.
I agree.
You agree?
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Torgerson agrees? So I will fall in line with that. Was that the last decision we had to make on the decision?
Special conditions.
So we've got three of them. The operations plan, does that address all of our concerns in the past about rain gardens?
It does, yep. You had looked at those, and it's very similar to what Mr. Marchetti had put together over on Cross. It actually, and I appreciate it, it includes a form for submitting the annual report.
Good.
Great.
Makes it nice and easy for the homeowners.
We're going to invite you next time we start talking about regs and rules?
Fantastic.
All right, so that one's taken care of. Vegetation within design range?
I mean, these are fairly common standard or special conditions that you have attached to the plans that are, look similar to this with the rain gardens and the peystone swale. It speaks to ensuring that the plants remain in the rain garden and as they die or become overgrown, they're maintained to control the function that it's intended to have.
I like that.
So then also, so special condition 3 addresses our concern about the A&R, does it not? It's got legal...
It addresses some of the concern. I believe that the additional concern that exists is the creation of the common driveway in the form that it is proposed on those lots could be perceived as allowing for the development of a lot that might otherwise be more difficult or undevelopable due to the costs. And that by permitting the driveway to be constructed in the manner that it's being constructed, you create one more additional dwelling unit and allow the developer to intrude through the creation of housing and lots that maybe weren't necessarily developable without that
No.
that creation?
No, because the A&R had lot frontage in an area, and so we haven't created anything that's not creatable by the A&R process.
Correct, I understand that, but I think what happened was, the way the lot was created before, there was a significant wetland impediment from the frontage that could have increased the development cost and would maybe have made the lot less desirable or something that someone just said, you know what, we'll give someone an extra big lot, or we'll do a bunch of somewhat larger lots and lose a unit in order to not have to mess around with this other thing. And this makes it easier to develop that lot because the driveway has access across another lot. And I think that's part of why we discussed the potential to look at and review the common driveway portion of the bylaw to be more specific and dial the language in to a point that addresses some of these potential issues.
I agree.
So this is not a... During we expressed, isn't really addressable here, it's because we've been told how the town will interpret the law. Not in the way that some of us would have chosen, but regardless, that's what it is now.
Correct.
Unless we change.
Correct.
Right.
But what this does is it alleviates future issues for current taxpayer or potential future taxpayers who purchase it and then say, well, how come you didn't protect me about being able to cross this driveway? Or something to that effect.
No, I understand that, yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm good with these special conditions as written.
Anyone else? Well, and I guess, hearing no more input, I would accept a motion.
What is our motion? To approve the stormwater permit?
Yep. With the conditions as written.
Yep.
Yep, I would move that we approve the stormwater permit for oh, Northfield Road and Holman Street with the conditions as written.
I will second that.
Excellent. Any further discussion about the approval? All in favor, roll call vote? Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I still have not heard from Tanner.
You're welcome, Brian.
How about on the off chance that we do get the other member to show up? Can we go ahead and move, put you... We can do that, right?
Do what?
We can move on with our schedule and come back to them.
If he's going to show?
Well, I haven't heard back from him one way or another, so it's uncommon that he doesn't get ahold of one of us. I'm going to leave it up to you. Okay, so at this point, we've got one member with the Mullen Rule, and you can only have one, and that member is with us tonight. So you need a total of... You need a voting quorum, and because it's a special permit, you need four out of the five members present at the hearing. And you also need to have four out of five in the positive of approval. So this Mullen Rule is a little difficult, especially when we have difficulty with attendance. And I don't want to put your project at jeopardy just because of a technicality.
Are you familiar with the Mullen Rule, when we say that?
You do?
Yes.
So there are four members here. The member who is on Zoom was not in attendance at your first session of your public hearing? So under mass general law, there is a provision called the Mullen Rule. I don't know the site off the top of my head. What it does is it allows any member of a public body to miss one session of a hearing. And as long as they've reviewed the video, the minutes, and the materials presented, or any combination thereof, and they sign an affidavit stating such, they're allowed to participate in the hearing and their vote is considered to be valid. I think what Mr. Allison is trying to say is, we now have another member who is absent. So should this hearing not conclude this evening? Or should the gentleman on Zoom not be willing to sign the Mullen certificate, because he's not obligated to? Then you would have to hope that Mr. Cole would sign the Mullen certificate, and you would need four, you would need all four of the members present tonight to vote in the affirmative on your project. Or if Mr. Cole were to show up, or he were willing to sign the Mullen certificate at the next hearing, you need four of the five members to vote in the affirmative. I think what Mr. Allison is trying to do is give you the opportunity to to not force you into one decision or the other, to give you the opportunity to make that choice. And I see that Mr. Romano's on, so I don't know if you'd like to, you know, confer with him, or if you're willing to go forward. It's completely your choice.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Imagine if...
Can we have a conversation here without...
No, I was going to say, let's see what you have to say, Valerio.
That sounds like Tejal, of course. Well, Mr. Bernie, in their way that we can, you know, ask the fourth member who is going to be affected by the Mullen Rule, wasn't in attendance last time, whether they would be willing to sign the Mullen certificate?
Absolutely. Mr. Torgerson?
Yes, sir.
Have you received and signed the Mullen certificate?
I have not, no.
Is that something you would be willing to do?
I will sign the Mullen if that's...
Yep, so you've reviewed the materials?
I will review all the material.
Okay.
I have not reviewed everything.
All right. There's your answer, Mr. Romano.
Okay. I'm sorry. We don't, since the last meeting, we actually approved for provisional license by the Cannabis Control Commission. It's amazing, they're moving faster. What, I mean, what, is there a suggestion? I mean, that's very encouraging, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Torgerson, for being willing to review everything and get involved with the hearing. I hate to continue to move it forward. It sounds like if we have four, and hopefully no deficiencies in our application, the special permits will be awarded and the site plan will be approved. So I guess I suggest we move forward. But now my concern is, if Mr. Torgerson has not had the opportunity to review everything for tonight's hearing, then are we even going to be able to get a vote tonight? Are we going to be able to go through the draft decision?
We can't even technically open the hearing without him having signed the Mullen Rule, isn't that true? Isn't that what you...
Yeah, sorry, I've done research on this for another town, but Adam, you're certainly far more sophisticated on it than I am.
I was going to say, my understanding is he doesn't have to have signed the certificate now. He needs to sign it prior to the decision being recorded with the town clerk.
Okay.
And if I'm incorrect, please feel free to...
So there was one more concern in mind from bringing this up, was that if you get two members with the Mullen Rule, and then one of those two members misses a second meeting, then you've only got a four-member voting quorum where you need four affirmative votes. As it is now, if they both signed a Mullen Rule, you would have five voting members, which you only need four affirmative.
And that's certainly the way I understand it. I mean, my goal all along would be to have had all five. I mean, we just haven't had, you know, we just haven't been fortunate enough to have that so far. So I don't know if if that's something I can rely on. I think internally as a team, we sort of had expected that, you know, we just need a unanimous four, because we unable to get a night where we had all five. And Prejka and Tejal, I'm not sure who's there, I apologize. I should know, we've been communicating, but I know Tejal's there. Did you, was that your understanding as well? I'm sorry to confer with my client over the electronic means.
Val, I'm here as well, Prejka and Tejal.
Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Should they come to the mic if they're going to?
Yeah, you need, I'm sorry, you need to come to the mic so everyone can hear. It's probably picking you up because you're loud enough, but it'll be much clearer if you're at the mic.
Hey, Val. Yeah, I mean, I think that was our... I mean, we would ideally love to have all five members, but it's, you know, we've been to a couple of these where we haven't been able to get the attendance, so I think we would agree with Valerio that if we're able to move forward and hopefully get a vote with four members, we can try for that.
So I guess I have one more question. Thanks, Tejal. Thanks, Tejal, I appreciate it. I guess I have one more question, if possible, and I apologize to belabor things, Mr. Bernie and Mr. Torgerson. Would, is it possible that we would have, you know, discussed the draft decision and get a vote this evening? Or is that not possible, given the state of the review of the materials? Because if we're gonna continue it anyway, might as well just continue it and see if we can get, you know, an official for Mr. Torgerson, maybe signs the Mullen certificate, you know, before the next hearing, have a chance to review everything. But if we're gonna go through it all and discuss it, we're certainly prepared to do that. We had no homework left from the last hearing, you know, and that was our hope for tonight. So I guess that would be my final question before giving a decision as to what we should, you know, what we should do.
Well, I think if you wanted to be cautious, and, you know, that having the signed Mullen prior to the vote would be the most conservative approach, and that would ensure that, were there any questions or appeals, there wouldn't be any technicality that would befall the So, it may be more, well, I don't want to tell you what you should do. The conservative approach is to hold the vote until you have the Mullen. I don't believe that that would prevent the four members this evening from opening the hearing and discussing it, because this is a separate session, and Mr. Torgerson is here. So if there were issues that he were to bring up that were not presented at the hearing session, that he was not at, you would have the opportunity to address them prior to final deliberation and closing of the public hearing. It would allow the process to continue, and it would allow testimony to continue. But it would most likely be most beneficial to not vote without that signed paper. I guess would be my take on it.
I understand, Mr. Bernie. And yeah, and I don't know the definitive answer for that either. I've looked at the issue from a different perspective. So, I mean, I guess, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, if I may add to Adam's comment, I think that the most conservative thing to do would be ask for a continuance tonight, because at the next hearing, given that there were five people here, you would only still need one Mullen Rule, and Mr. Cole wouldn't need to do the Mullen Rule because he, no hearing on the date that he wasn't here. Is that correct?
And so I just, you know, through the chair, I believe, so you don't think it would, it sounds like we have four, and Mr. Cole was on, at our, at our other hearing, so if he missed tonight, he could sign the certificate. And if we discussed tonight also, Mr. Torgerson can sign the certificate. So either way, we could potentially have five at the next hearing. Is that?
That's correct.
And so, so my concern is by, and I'm, of course, I'm gonna defer to the chair and to the board as to the suggestion of what to do, but if anybody in the board had any questions, any other issues that we could resolve tonight so we could be prepared for next time, given that, you know, this has been going on for a while, I'm certainly happy to answer them. So in that case, I would be happy to open the public hearing, or allow you, not object, you open, or not ask for continuance, if that makes sense. If Mr. Torgerson is not ready to ask questions, and if other members of the board don't really have anything else to add at this point, then, you know, I suppose it's six or a half dozen, you know?
Well, the bottom line is, either we open the hearing, and then we can, then we can have input and discussion, deliberation, or we continue the hearing. In my mind, it's, it's, it's not my project. So quite honestly, I'm just trying to give you as much information as possible to be as fair as possible. I don't have any inclination one way or another on how either one of these people would vote. But I do know that, given the lack of attendance, that having two Mullen with a five-member board is, I guess, the next thing is, we're not gonna be able to have a hearing if one of the two isn't here.
That's correct. And Mr. Brenner has already said that he will not be available for the next meeting.
I would really like.
You're not gonna be here.
I will be available for the next meeting.
I would really like to not be available for the next meeting, but if, if we find ourselves in a position that that is necessary for town business to function, I will see what I can do about getting to a place with reliable cell reception.
Maybe we can all come join you on your vacation, Mr. Brenner.
It'll be a party, and we can all go through the rental, and it will be lovely. I hope you like mountains and wilderness.
I sure do. Yeah, so I, I mean, I just, I just don't know. So it sounds like it would be more convenient for Mr. Brenner to try to, because if we lose Mr. Brenner, then we're still, gosh, this has gotten, gone around circles.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
So if, if we did have another hearing on the eighth, and Mr. Brenner wasn't here, that would be a third Mullen certificate required.
Which I, it would be, I will telegraph, it would be my intent to review everything and sign my Mullen ASAP.
Can I just have one second, and I'll come to a decision?
Yep.
It sounds like there's no way we're gonna get, even if, I mean, even if the understanding is that the Mullen certificate needs to be signed before the clerk signs off, which would be after the 20-day appeal period, right?
I would say it would need to be prior to it being filed and signed by the individual who's signing up, like, before it gets to the town clerk.
Before it gets to the town clerk, okay, I get it, sorry. And so with that in mind, even if that's the case, without Mr. Torgerson having had the opportunity to review all the materials, we're probably not gonna, you know, deliberate and vote tonight on the, on the application. Is that a fair assumption?
That would be my assumption.
I think that's probably fair. And, you know, frankly, if Mr. Brenner is not going to be available in two weeks, if you were to continue, it would be probably in your best interest to do so till the 22nd of August, just because that avoids, you're not gonna get a vote without Mr. Brenner. And so, you avoid bringing that whole team together, and I know that another month of waiting to get the project underway after you've gone through the, what would conceivably be the longest part of the project is not what you want to hear. But I also hate for you to come out two weeks from now and then say, oh, well, we're gonna come back two weeks after that, and just know that you have that, that, you know, 30-day or 28-day delay. Again, I sympathize, I empathize with you. I've spoken to Ian several times, and I understand that you've been in Waltham for almost two years now, trying to go through the process, so at least we can say it hasn't been that long.
Yeah, but like, the 13-member city council is a special permit granting authority, so it's.
I know.
Do you think you could, is there another matter that could take a few minutes, and maybe the clients could step outside, and we could just chat on the phone for a minute?
Absolutely, we have, we have minutes and some other, other items, so.
If that's all right, if Priyanka and Tejal could step outside and give me a call, and I can get Ian on the phone as well, and the four of us could pow out for a couple minutes, and then we'll just pick it up later in the calendar. Probably shouldn't take more than 10 minutes.
Sure, we'll step outside, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We'll give you at least a minute.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. Excuse me. So, long story short, we are going to skip over that for the moment, that being the public hearing for 43 Summer Street. We'll go into minutes approval. We have four sets of minutes.
That's correct.
If anybody wants to make a motion for the minutes, or?
I'm gonna review quickly.
Is there anybody in the waiting room?
No.
I would move that we approve the minutes for our 6/27 meeting, along with the hearings for 494 Electric Avenue, Northfield Road and Holman Street, and 43 Summer Street, also on that date.
Does that work for you, Adam? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Excellent. Any comments on the approval of the minutes? Gonna be roll call vote. Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself? Excellent, the minutes are approved. Committee reports. Open space, he's not here. Municipal Building Design Committee, we weren't able to have a quorum last Monday, we should be meeting next Monday. Agricultural Commission, same thing, we weren't able to get a quorum. We did have, we lost one member, and we got a new member appointed last Tuesday, I believe. So hopefully, we would be getting a special meeting together for, we're hoping towards August 4th, but our next scheduled meeting is the 3rd Thursday of August, so hopefully we will have a meeting in August. The farmer's market's been going pretty well. I expected rather poor attendance yesterday, but it was, was much better than I had expected. It was actually better than Father's Day, when we were open. So there's been 12 to 13 vendors there, regular. And the Historical Society is opening, has office hours during the market, so anybody who wants to go to the market can also visit the Historical Society for a tour, or just to go chat. Capital Planning Committee.
Emails just went out for possibly scheduling a meeting during the first week of August. We will see if that's when the meeting is.
Okay. So there's no report? Because there have been no meetings.
Yeah, no, there has been no meeting, there's no report, just, that's where it is.
Good. Stormwater Task Force.
Have not met.
August 4th.
So we're gonna be competing for them downstairs, aren't we?
Well.
Well, if we have it on the 4th, then we will be. And you still haven't met with them yet, have you?
No.
No, okay. So MRPC?
Yes, so we met since the last time. Not too much to report, there's some grant funding that's coming in. I don't have a lot of information beyond that, just because I'm not in Lunenburg kind of figuring, I don't know if Adam has any more information on that.
Is this the Planning Assistance Grant?
Yes.
So, yes. This is the grant for the MBTA infrastructure requirements. We partnered with MRPC, they applied for the grant, they're going to perform the services. Karen Chapman, who is the Director of Community Development at MRPC, reached out. They're still working out the contracts with the state, and she is tentatively on our agenda for September, when the contract should be worked out, and she will come meet with the board to discuss the project, sort of try and get some direction on how the board would like to approach it, and sort of set up what the project will look like from her perspective, and get the board's input on that.
So we did receive the grant?
We did.
And we're gonna spend it together, we're gonna, we're gonna basically give it to MRPC?
Correct. And our, there's a match to it, and our match is my time.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
That's it?
That's basically.
So that was the regional planning, and then the Joint Transportation Commission?
We met as well, not too much to report. They did say they were sending out surveys to town managers and selectmen for a, I think it's called the Safe Roads Plan, and basically, they said that we can apply for a grant, they suggest that multiple communities go in together to get the grant money, but it also means that the town of Lunenburg would have to also put forth money as well to match it. I'm not sure exactly what the percentages were to get the grant. Basically, the grant will only cover a certain portion of this plan. And that's about it.
Okay. Now, was that Safe Streets? Is that complete?
Safe Streets, yeah.
Yeah, Safe Streets.
So it's, it's different than Complete Streets?
It's different. Complete Streets is more of a multimodal sharing and access within the right-of-way. Safe Streets, I believe, is designed to address problematic areas.
Like separation of pedestrians and traffic?
Uh, no, more geometric and intersectional sorts of issues, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
So, like, delta intersections we have, like Northfield and Oak Ave, which is the bane of my existence.
Line of turn page?
Yeah. It would, it would look at things like that, and preventing people who drop their kids off at Turkey Hill and then bang a U and come in and take the left turn back onto Oak Ave. It would, the idea would be to square an intersection like that up and make it just a normal T-intersection.
Massive chestnut.
I don't think there's any hope for that one.
No. Okay, so that rounds out our committee reports.
For the sake of being thorough, we did not mention Economic Development Committee, which has not met, but.
Thursday.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to say anything because it's yours.
Yeah, that's right. Glad you know your place.
Well, actually, I'm gonna say something about it, because there was a meet and greet set up by the chair, I think Kathy's the chair, right?
Yes, yes, she is.
So, there was a meeting last Friday, last Friday or the Friday before, to discuss a potential business coming in, which was quite interesting. I was in attendance.
With your agcom hat on?
Yeah, well, I had a couple hats, but I was also surprised not to see that on the director's items.
Well, look at that.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, it sounds like, you know, in the interest of not having multiple hearings that need reviewed by folks that aren't here, right now, there's only one that, depending on who shows up next time, I need to catch up on, I guess we'll respectfully ask for a continuance, but really hope that we can move this forward at the next hearing, and I understand the difficulty, summertime and everything. But yeah, I guess we're asking for a continuance.
To what date?
October 20.
Well, so.
22?
Yeah.
There's eight, the eight or 22 are the scheduled meetings.
I know, but the eight, we know that we're gonna seriously inconvenience, somebody's gonna be on vacation. Yeah, what we just spoke about was the 22nd.
Okay. That, again, I wanted to be clear, I didn't want to assume where you were speaking to, and I wanted to, it's always better for you to say it than me.
Yeah, I get it, absolutely, of course. Yep.
Super. So, and we have no time clock, so we're not concerned about?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we don't have a time clock, it doesn't mean we're not concerned.
Well, we need to have the request in writing sometime.
Yeah, no, this is, yeah.
The public hearing is still ongoing, so the days haven't started counting.
Correct.
But let's not, yeah, I think, I appreciate the way you just said that, Mr. Bernie, that there is some concern for timing. I mean, the Cannabis Control Commission has now given us a license, we'd love to start constructing, assuming that there's no deficiencies in our application, which, you know, after the last hearing, I thought we were pretty solid, you know, so, yeah, so I guess the 22nd, we'll be back at 6:00.
Very good. So that was.
Motion and a vote.
That was an official request for continuance to August 22nd. That was an official request for continuance to August 22nd. And we need a, yeah?
Move that we continue the public hearing for 43 Summer Street to August 22nd, 6:05 PM.
Perfect.
I will second that.
Excellent. Any further discussion about continuing? Roll call vote, all in favor? Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you, and so sorry for the inconvenience.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate the board's time, and I look forward to meeting with everybody in about a month's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, take care.
So now that we're on to director's items, I can answer your question.
Okay.
I have met with these individuals. We discussed their project. There is nothing formal yet, so I hesitate to bring it to this body. They had asked if they should come and introduce themselves to the planning board. I sort of dissuaded them from doing so, not because I don't think it's a good project or don't think the board should know about it. My history with the board says, when someone stands at this podium and says, "We want to do this thing," the board gets excited, right, and so and off in many cases, and worries when that application doesn't happen. So I wanted to avoid that potential conflict. I know there are a lot of moving parts that are working with this business. It is an agricultural business. It's similar to Bright Farms. They're looking at the property at 361 Mass Ave. I mean, none of this is secret. It's all been, it's been said publicly. They're called Loofah Farms, and they are looking to do something that is very similar to what the board has previously approved there. They come very highly regarded. They are a Canadian company out of Montreal. So it's not that I don't want the board to know, or I'm trying to keep it from the board. I want to manage expectations, and I want to ensure that we're not creating an environment where there's an expectation of timing.
Okay, laugh, laugh, laugh.
And so that was my thinking. I believe I have mentioned having discussions with the business at that location. I don't know that I've given any detail similar to what we just discussed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'm going to have to stick with it, hopefully in my memory. Yeah, so anyways, we did, Kathy set up, the chair of the Economic Development Committee set up a meet and greet with the representative. They came, and it sounded really good. I would not have described it as very similar to Bright Farms, because first off, it's half the size. Second off, Bright Farms was growing mono, and they were direct selling it, so there was no impact at all to the local retail. And so Bright Farms, and I agree with you, it's like a great company. This would be their first North American...
U.S. venture, yeah.
Now, what I, I've done considerable amount of research. It does seem like their corporate business model has pretty much co-opted the CSA model, which farmers, community-supported agriculture, which the farming community has worked hard for 20, 25 years to get off the ground. To have a corporation come in here and have a business model that is basically CSA, may or may not be viewed as the most beneficial thing for the farming community, but in looking at our 40-plus farms, the majority of them aren't necessarily vegetable, so...
And my understanding is that they work hard to take that model that you just described and partner with the local farms and the local businesses in order to support them and magnify their reach and avoid them needing to do things like travel an hour to a market at Haymarket, and be able to focus more on their growing and their business at their location. They use the example when we met of they have a bakery that they partner with in Montreal, and if you order by midnight, they bake the bread starting at 1:00 AM, and they're putting fresh bread on the truck in the morning to deliver to customers. So, and that's partnered with vegetables and honey or syrup or whatever else they're partnering with people for. So I think there's a lot of nuts and bolts that are still undefined, but it certainly seems to be something that could have positive impact on the farming community.
Yes, I totally agree with that statement. So just to keep you in the loop, I guess, I have been in communication with that representative, and he seems very interested in coming to Farmer's Market and then having a group session very similar to the one we had Friday, again, with the farming community and just in general.
Yeah, I think that's a, and that was all things I had suggested to him that would be beneficial to him finding a way to make this work with the existing infrastructure that we have.
Yep. Supa.
So we'll go with, we're going to go backwards. Well, actually, we're going to start in the middle. I don't have an update on Pond View. We're still waiting around. The zoning committee meeting. So I have now, I believe, heard back from all the folks I've reached out to regarding addressing infrastructure and zoning in the corridor from Mass Ave to West Townsend Road on Chase Road, or on Chase Road from Mass Ave to the Townsend Line. And overwhelmingly, it was a, yes, we'd like to have this discussion. However, we think it should be a representative or the chairs of each committee, and it should be a 45-minute to one-hour Zoom meeting that we sort of hash out the basics, go back to our committees, and go from there in an effort to get the most bang for the amount of time. I think getting all of the, I think the feeling is getting all the individuals from each of those various boards and committees together creates maybe an unwieldy group of voices. And if the chairs or a representative are at these multidisciplinary meetings, then they can go back and have the more in-the-weeds discussion that each board or committee would have, and bring back the synthesized salient points to the multidisciplinary group, move things forward through that process. Ultimately, I think this ends up being some manner of symposium or SWAT exercise or larger group meeting. I think from the chair of the board, the select board, the chair of the sewer commission, and there was one other who felt that, you know, everybody's busy, everybody has a lot to do, and trying to limit these meetings in length will be the way to get people to commit and engage.
Well, who else was on your list? There was Board of Health, there was Conservation, there was Water Department, right?
Water, Conservation, Sewer, Board of Health, Select Board, Town Manager, and then the DPW Director.
Okay.
So you're looking at eight people, yeah.
Well, I'd like to get at least two people from each group. I mean, each elected body, elected-appointed body. But it is what it is.
And I suspect that, and I mean, what I'll do is, and I guess I'm looking at timing, when folks think that this would be the best to do.
Well, the extension of the open meeting law, remote stuff, is what, for another three months? Is that what it was?
It's till the end of the year.
End of the year, okay.
And, you know, so this meeting that we're talking about doesn't have to be a public meeting, because it's not a meeting of a specific body. Granted, it would be ideal for it to be a public meeting.
Yeah. I think there's far too many things that go on in this town that aren't public until they're decided upon.
Again, but I think under the auspices of the open meeting law, this isn't a committee that has been formed. It's a non-quorummed collection of individuals or duos from committees that are having discussion with others. Again, ideally, it's a public meeting, and you do it openly, but it doesn't hit the public meeting requirement under open meeting law.
Right. I understand what you're saying.
I mean, are we thinking September, when school rolls back around? Are we trying to do this in mid-August, a little bit sooner?
I was thinking in April, back when I first mentioned it, but whatever.
I mean, I can, I can reach out and see when people are available.
Okay. That would be great.
And I'll coordinate by email to schedule it.
I would appreciate it. Oh, and I guess technically Tanner would be chair, but he hasn't chaired a meeting since he's been appointed chair. So technically, he's still chair. Anyways...
Well, I'll include you on the list, because I know you're interested.
I would appreciate it. And then, well, if it's a public meeting, I could show up, but if it's not, then I technically couldn't? Who's going to kick me out, right?
Exactly.
I get you. Was that it for the director's items?
No, and then we have the driveways and entrances stuff.
Okay.
I, again, I'm going to look to the board to decide if you want to discuss this this evening, if you want to take the papers and review them and have a discussion on the 22nd. I will give you a quick and dirty synopsis of what I found. Common driveways are special permits. That seems to be all but universal. It seems that most communities use special permit to govern common driveways. They do so on more limited basis than we do. They have, they often allow three or more, but like ours, they require everyone to have independent frontage. But what I seem to have found in the collection of ones that I've given you, and again, they're not necessarily, they're more rural communities or suburban communities. They're not necessarily, I wouldn't call them rebel to Lunenburg necessarily, but I wouldn't call them disparate from Lunenburg. They are very specific about lengths, widths, grades, and they lay it all out within the common driveway language. And by doing a special permit, you, you know, you have a more defined process. You have a less ambiguous or fluid interpretation of what is a common driveway and how the language is applied. Our language is sparse at best, and kind of just leaves it open to the building commissioner to determine how they will interpret that.
And is there any idea on your part from when that was, when that first appeared in our zoning?
No.
Okay.
It was here when I started working here, and if I'm not mistaken, had been for some time. When we redid Section 6.4, it was removed, probably inadvertently, but I think probably was a blessing in disguise, and was brought to my attention, and the board at the time it was brought to my attention felt that it was important to put it back in almost the same as it was, with, I think the addition was adding two primary dwellings, because now the board had permitted accessory dwelling units by right. So to avoid having a common driveway to two dwelling units, which would be just a driveway in most residential situations that have an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, it wouldn't have to be a common driveway if it was a primary and accessory on the same line.
Well, but it didn't use to say primary, it just said dwelling.
Okay.
So you couldn't, theoretically, you couldn't have a common driveway duplexes.
Got it.
Okay.
But that would be, again, an interpretation thing by...
All right. Well, that is a perfect segue of what we should do at the next meeting when you're not here and you can't answer our questions.
What's that?
August 8th, you're not going to be here, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that wasn't, that's not on your director's items, but I think...
No, it's, no, it's not, but I had intended to bring it up at the last meeting. That was not. So I did send an email around, and I didn't receive any comment or thought from any of the members, so I figured we could talk about it tonight, which is why there's a giant question mark after it.
Yep. That looked like a regular-sized question mark.
Well, yeah. I mean, we don't have, we have nothing for the agenda, other than minutes approval and committee reports.
Okay. And your crystal ball doesn't see any applications coming in between now and then, right?
There's nothing that could make it. We don't have, we don't have advertising time. So worst-case scenario is we would get an A&R.
And then we're definitely meeting the 22nd.
Correct.
Well, given we've got four people. Okay. Well, I guess then, that's where we're at. 6:00 PM, all board meetings are held at Town Hall unless otherwise indicated. August 8th, question mark. How do we feel? Do we still have Mr. Torgerson with us?
Yes.
Okay. How do we feel?
Yeah, I'm here.
How do we feel about not, what have we got for ideas for the August 8th? Because we're not going to have Adam with us. Anybody feel strongly one way or another, meeting, no meeting?
I will not be there, so I don't have a thought on this.
There you go. Well, given that additional information...
I mean, if there's nothing really on the board to discuss, then it would make sense not to have it, unless something comes up in between now and then.
Unless, unless the board, and I'm not saying in favor of this or not, again, I'm not going to be there, I don't have a strong preference, unless the board wanted work time for something like...
Common driveways?
Common driveways.
But then we're not going to have the guy to ask the questions, too.
You're right.
So, I mean, we could spitball and brainstorm all we wanted, but he could come back the next week and say, "What did you guys put together?" Right? I mean, that's not...
And you don't necessarily need to put anything together. If you want to spitball and brainstorm and come up with a framework of ideas, then I can work off of that. I don't, if you would rather just have a week off, that's completely valid as well for...
So that's the other thing, is we could do individually, read through the stuff that Adam has put together for us on the common roads, common drives, and come up with our own checklist that we can...
That would be my favorite. Coordinate. Gives me tingles.
No, we wouldn't bother you with the checklist, we'd...
No, that's what I mean, when you come back on the 22nd, if everybody's read it, that just...
There you go.
That makes my day.
Yeah. And maybe we could have somebody up to speed with the, with that public hearing and have a Mullen Rule signed. That would be even extra bonus. So, and Mr. Torgerson, how do you feel about having a meeting on August 8th, the next second Monday?
Well, I mean, if no one, if we're going to be very shorthanded, I don't really see a point.
Did you hear it? I did not. Did you say that you were in favor or not in favor of having a meeting?
I said that if we're going to be shorthanded, I don't really see the point.
If we're going to be shorthanded, he doesn't think we should meet.
Okay. I agree with that sentiment, Eric. Thank you. Does it, you don't matter, because you're going to be the absent one, so...
Right, I'm a jerk, I'm a slacker.
I mean, if...
Not at all.
I mean, if, if it, if it's a brainstorm, what, would a brainstorming session be something that is a public meeting?
If there's three of you here, yes.
Okay.
You and I can talk about things. You and Matt can talk about things. Matt and Matt can talk about things. The three of us, highly illegal.
And then what's that?
And you can't talk to one Matt and then the other Matt and tell him what the first Matt said.
Infectious validity, right?
What, infectious validity? Is that what that is? No, that's just a violation of the open meeting law.
Right, but I mean, it's a third-hand.
Infectious invalidity is a, that's a zoning thing.
Okay, but it's similar to that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so you can't say, can't have two people talk and then go to a third person and say, "Well, this person said that." Basically. Legally, you can't do that. All right, so I guess, I guess why don't we just not have the meeting? Is there anybody against that? No? Okay. So why don't we officially not have a meeting? Do we have to make an announcement or just not post? That's all?
Yeah, we just won't post it.
And, and again, I would, I would, I would ask that we do, we do our homework on the common driveways and, and catch up on past meetings. So then, so then August 22, we're gonna have the continuation for 260 Flula Road, which was very minor impact.
That's all in theory. They're, they're working with the city of Pittsburgh right now, so.
So then I might not be ready?
Uh, you know, I never like to anticipate.
It's always a possibility.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
All right. And then we've also gonna have the continuance of the 43 Summer Street. And then everything else that filters in between now and then.
How much should come in a month?
Curse you. So you've already touched upon ongoing items?
I have.
Okay.
We do have some.
So just radio silence on Pond View. That's it?
Yeah, I, I suspect he is writing checks to engineers and lawyers and preparing to drive in the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Because it's a time clock on that, right?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, that doesn't even go to us, though.
Goes to the zoning board.
Okay.
But, so what happens is the zoning board receives it. If it's complete, then they distribute it to a predefined list of groups in town, of which the planning board is one, and those folks have 45 days to respond, and the public hearing needs to be opened. It's something stupid, and it's not like in line with any other statutory timeline. I think it's like 25 days or, or 32 days or something ridiculous. So they have to open the hearing before all the comments are due. They get comments, and I think they only have X number of days. It's kind of like a subdivision. In, like, they have X number of days to render a decision, and the time clock can be frozen through mutual agreement and all of that.
So the hearing and the decision is all wrapped into one time clock?
Yeah. If I, if I recall correctly. And it is all in the information that was sent out last year or so when Attorney Costa did 40B workshop.
Amanda's not gonna have that information.
She's not. I can send it out again.
That would be good. Would you be interested in reviewing?
There's a, there's actually a really, a really great 40B handbook that's put together, and it distills everything down to understandable jargon. It's not like reading the general laws where you're like, "What, huh?"
Was this material pre-cancer or post-cancer for me?
Pre.
I think, that's what I thought it was. I thought I'd seen this, but I wanted to verify. I wasn't thinking of something else.
Cool. And again, the 40B is a comprehensive permit, and it technically doesn't have much to do with us at all. I mean, we get input, and that's it. ZBA has in the past reached out to us for additional input, but they're not obligated to do that. So this only goes to the zoning board of appeals.
And they wrap all of the processes into one approval process. So the sewer, the sewer commission, this applicant seems to think the water district can be wrapped in. All the planning functions, all the stormwater functions, all the zoning board functions, anything that they say. "I know you have this great law that you use to protect your community and your people, but we want a waiver from it." The zoning board can, has the power to give them that.
Right, well, aren't they, okay, so this is, this is the technicality. They've already gotten a permit by planning board for 120-something units, right?
Correct.
So.
They can modify the subdivision through this process.
They're gonna have to come back to this board, though, to modify it. No? Really? Because of the comp permit?
And, and I will say, the designs that I have seen would have, the, the biggest modification would be the removal of one roadway that's a cul-de-sac. So they've designed it in a way that they've combined lots that are contained within the approved road network, and they intend, as I understand it, to use the approved road network. So there wouldn't be any real modification that would be necessary.
So all the common land, is that remaining unaffected? Because all common land is where all the infrastructure was, right? Drainage structures and.
Yes, yeah, well, uh, yeah, but they would, they would need to, so this kind of becomes a microdevelopment within the larger development because it's gonna have its own driveways and parking and stormwater infrastructure contained within the bounds of this project.
But it's also.
And then all the road infrastructure is where it was originally proposed to be, as I understand it.
But I just, I'm just trying to, trying to be clear that they cannot take away from what is required for whatever it is that they don't change? You can't say that, can you?
I can't, because in, I mean, one would believe that whatever was approved in the subdivision that isn't being touched wouldn't be subject to this approval because this approval is contained within the geographic area that the project is being built. So they, I don't believe, could say, "Oh, but we want to erase this condition that says, on the complete other side of the subdivision, we want to do this thing."
That isn't related to the.
Correct, that isn't related to the comprehensive permit. But the general laws of the Commonwealth over the past 20-some-odd years have always proven that they have a very wry sense of humor, and I always think something like that, and then I'm proven wrong.
Humor is a fickle thing. So, anybody else, anything else on the ongoing items?
Nope.
Public comment? Any public?
Look at all those people lining up.
I think Dave, Dave was on there. He dropped off.
Dave?
Uh, Dave P. I assumed it was Dave Passius. You know what they say about assumptions, though.
Yeah, I don't have any hands on Zoom.
Okay. Any board comment concerns?
Nope.
Nope.
I was gonna bring up my disagreement with the building inspector's discussion on the common driveway, but I think I can let that slide until we get into our discussion about the bylaw, right? When I grabbed that big pen, we were talking. All right, nope, that's it. I guess, unless there's any other discussion points, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
I will second.
Second. Any discussion about adjourning? All in favor, roll call vote. Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you, folks, for getting through another planning board meeting.
Thank you all. Eric, if you could get that Mullen to me and review those before the 22nd, I would appreciate it.
Yep, we'll do it, sir.
Thank you. Have a nice night, everyone.
So if you guys are getting the electronic correspondence from Marjorie, then you, you'll, you probably have these in your email?
I have to look.
But I'm, I always like to have the paper copy in my hand, so I would.